Hi, my name's Paul Haber and I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening. I'd like to start by telling you that I think of myself as inviting you all here in three capacities. First is as a new party member. Second is as a university professor of political science. So I spend my days and too many of my evenings involved in public education myself. I get the kids after they go through K through 12 with all they've learned and haven't learned. And finally, third, last but not least, as a parent. And as a parent who is concerned about the future of his children in public education. Before we get started, I'd just like to express my appreciation to all of those who make this meeting possible. Volunteers from the Missoula New Party, the large number of teachers, parents, and public school officials who generously devoted time to us, answered our numerous questions as we prepared for this evening. Next, all of the candidates that are seated here before you, and all of you for coming out this evening and making this possible. Politics in our country appears to me to be having two significant effects on our participation as citizens in the democratic process. The first effect that I see is to make people feel more alienated from the process. Politicians and the entire system of government are perceived to be often ineffective if not corrupt. And that perception leads to a second one, which is that there is nothing that we can do as regular citizens to change it. Our elected officials are seen by many of us to be in the pockets of the powerful. Now, we may not be exactly sure all the time who the powerful people are. We just know that they're not us. This trend is very pronounced in our country, to the point that only about half of the people vote in presidential elections. And this undermines the democratic process. For when regular working people decline to participate, the system becomes one of elites making policy that serves the interests of the elites. The second effect on participation in politics that I see happening today is a more positive one. Frustration with the status quo can lead to apathy and disaffection, but it can also lead to the construction of new ideas and organizations bent on taking government back in the name of the people. Organizations are being created in our country that strive to make things better. They do it in large part by increasing citizen participation in those decisions which most importantly affect our lives and thereby, by doing so, we improve the quality of public policy. The New Party is founded on the belief that increased citizen involvement makes for better governmental policy. To that end, in 1991, we created a new party. We are a diverse group of concerned citizens who believe that we can make a difference. By devoting our time and our ideas, we will make a better democracy. We are not a single-issue group, but rather a broad diversity of people. People who work in the home with primary responsibility for our children, people who work in small and medium-sized businesses, people who work in the public sector, people who work to help organize low and moderate-income people, people who work hard to balance the need for environmental protection and economic development that creates jobs that pay living wages. In less than three years of active organizing, we have 5,000 dues-paying members nationwide, and we have won about 80 of 100 races in 10 states. We are people committed to realizing a progressive vision for the country in the years ahead. Obviously, political parties, elected officials, and government cannot solve all of our problems or realize all of our dreams. But we in the New Party are convinced that good government, which depends on getting good people elected and then holding those people accountable to their campaign promises, is an indispensable ingredient in building the type of communities that we all want to live in. So finally, why public education? Our public education system is charged with educating our kids to give them the skills necessary to get a good job or go on to university. We charge them with developing an appreciation and talent for learning. In short, we charge them with nurturing in our kids the attributes necessary for citizenship. When the schools are working right, they socialize our kids in democratic values. Public schools are just that, they are public. They need our input, and in case there are some in public education who have somehow forgotten that, we must remind them that they must listen to us. We pay for the schools, we send them our kids, we citizens are the reasons that public schools exist, they work for us. And thus, like any good employer, we need to be knowledgeable about what we are asking our employees to do. It seems to me that there is no education, or excuse me, no election in the state of Montana in which the gap is larger between, on the one hand, the importance of the office and, on the other hand, citizen knowledge and participation. What these people will do, or some percentage of them, is vitally important to the community. So we hold this forum tonight as a step towards trying to close the gap somewhat. Thank you. Judy, do you want to say a few words?
Thanks, Paul. My name is Judy Smith. I am a New Party member. I want to briefly take a moment to talk about another important election that's upcoming and invite you to participate with us in that one as well. And that's the upcoming city council elections, because city council is another major focus of the New Party. And just to let you know that one of our areas that we have done quite a bit of work is to take a solid look at who runs for council, to find out what kinds of values and issues they support, and to see if we can endorse them and work for them in the upcoming elections. So again, I want to invite your participation. We're actively recruiting, seeing if there's some candidates anywhere, whether you're watching us on TV or here tonight, that'd be interested in asking some questions about whether you should be a city councilperson, whether there are some things in this community that you'd like to see done differently, you'd like to support certain kinds of issues that are coming in front of the city these days. And so if you are, we'd be interested in talking to you. We, again, have a table here at the door for those of you that are with us tonight. Invite your interest, whether yourself as a candidate, whether you're interested as a ward member in working for candidates, whether you'd be interested in our process of endorsement. We invite your attention. If you're watching us on TV, we invite you to call us at 543-4485. So again, thank you for a brief moment to talk about city council, and tonight we are going to be focusing on the elections for school board.
I'd do much better without one of these. Two specific items that were drawn to a committee's attention by each candidate. And in the interest of sparking controversy and different, you know, we picked the items that we thought were particularly, the public might be interested in hearing about. And then, most of the evening, we hope, will be devoted to audience questions, and then finally, we'll wrap it up. And so, in the interest of time, I guess we'll just proceed right to the candidate introductions. And what we'd like to have you do is, you know, a lot of times at these forums, candidates will tell you about their civic involvements and, you know, their values and all those other kinds of things. I guess we'd prefer to hear you zero in on whether or not you agree with the current direction of the current school board, and some of you are obviously incumbents, or whether there's changes that you would make in the direction of the school board. Or if you don't, if that's not a specific area that you've thought about or have particular agreements or disagreements, sort of, you know, what it is that, particular changes that you'd like to bring to the school board. And we're going to ask you to keep to three minutes. There's a lot of candidates here. Someone's going to be keeping track of the time. And was there an agreement about moving left to right or right to left here? As New Party members, we'd like to start on the left.
Just so the candidates know, when you hit the time limit, I'm going to give you a, and then we're going to ask you to wrap up right away so that we can move on, and we'll do that throughout the evening and try to keep it fairly balanced that way.
Well, I might as well stand when I do this. I feel better if I do it. And my name is Bob Grail, and I'm glad to see everybody came out for this. This is a nice deal. I'd just like to say first off, on what was said at the beginning here by Paul, what he read on that, I think that's right, folks. I agree totally with that. If we're going to do anything in this nation of ours, we're going to have to start doing it on a local, small level. I think we've lost track of that. We've depended upon officials higher up than us to just ride the boat and take care of things for us, and we'll sit back and make sure things go okay, and once in a while we'll go in and vote and then not participate anymore. The reason I say some of that stuff is about two months ago, well, let me start back a little further than that even. I'm from the Bonner area. If I get voted, I'm running for the city, for the high school board representing Bonner and Target Range. I'm a write-in candidate, which some folks feel that's dead in the water as I start, but I don't think so. I've had a lot of conversations with folks on both Target Range and Bonner, and we've got a chance at it. We're going to take a shot at it, and I'm not going to feel bad if I don't. I'll try again next time, I guess. But I'll back up a little bit to where we started with this thing. About two months ago, I was like most folks. I'd go inside my house and read the newspaper and see how the things were going, and I got shocked in Bonner when we found out we were going to have a pre-release center dropped on our back door. And one thing led to another. We got talking with a small group of folks, there's probably 15 of us, and we decided we wanted to fight this thing. And I don't know if anybody's followed it throughout the papers, but in the last two months, we did fight it, and we took it to the governor in the end, and we won. And we brought it out, the aspects from economics and small community, and what a community was. And I think after we discovered what a community was ourselves, well, we've stuck together out there. We're not disbanding. Our community group has stayed together, and we've decided to get involved in other things. And one of these items was this school board election. Well, we got started a little late. Nobody knew anything about when it was going to occur, anything like that. I went in for knee surgery on the 22nd, and apparently that was the filing date. And one thing led to another. I got contacted maybe a couple of weeks, yeah, it was about two weeks after that, by some folks from Target Range, and said they would like to have me run. They knew what we had done out there, and would like to have that type of community involvement. And that's where I'm coming from. I want to start in this thing from a grassroots aspect and bring the views of Bonner and Target Range out there. And after talking to those folks, I found out that both sides are a lot closer together than I thought. I didn't realize how independent feeling Target Range was. We like to keep our independent communities. We like that feeling, and we don't feel that we want to be consolidated into District One schools. That's nothing against District One, it's just we've been there for 100 years or greater, and we want to stay that way. Well, likewise, we also feel we have a good school system, and we want to transgress some of that to the high school system. I grew up here, I went to Sentinel High School, and I graduated from the University of Montana. And I guess I'll stop there.
My name is Jan Guffin. This is the first time I've ever held one of these things. My decision to run as a candidate for school trustee comes out of years of being involved in Missoula public schools. I have two children who've been schooled in the public schools and two who are currently in the schools. I've been very happy over the years with the dedication of teachers, with what I think are excellent programs. I'm concerned in this day and age of cuts at government levels that we still maintain and keep quality programs in Missoula. To speak to the issue of support of or lack of support for the current board, I have to admit that on this level, I'm new in this arena. I'm not even aware of a general direction of the board. My understanding is that people on the board work to the best of their ability to make policy and to plan a budget that works best for the kids in the school system. That's what I would like to do. I've gone to every meeting available that I've known of in the last three weeks trying to educate myself on what this is all about, this complex system. I've learned a lot, I have a lot more to learn. And that's all the time I need.
I hope you mind if I don't sit down. I've been busy all day, and it's kind of the first time I've had to kind of catch my breath and reflect on things a bit. My name is Mike Hodges, and I received this agenda the other day in the mail, and I looked at it, and I had answered a question to myself about why I am running for the school board. And it seems to me that after talking with a lot of people and finding out their questions, comments, and concerns, it seems like there's a lot of frustration. And I've thought of why does this frustration exist? Is it due to the fact that they feel they're not getting what they want out of it? Do they feel that their tax dollars aren't going to the right places within the school? Is there waste? Are there ways to maybe trim the fat, to find ways where this waste could be put to good use? Another question that came to mind as I was thinking of this, they were talking a little bit, and I'm sure we'll get into it later, about sex education, AIDS in the schools. I believe that the way I've been raised and a lot of things I've understood about that as I've gotten older is that some of these things should be taught amongst kids and parents. And that aspect of the involvement with parents and with schools and with educators, to me, seems so important because as we try to prepare everybody for the future, whether we're parents, whether we're kids, educators, I think we all have to keep in mind that we all may have a different perspective, and we all need to work together on a lot of things. It isn't easy. I realize that there's a lot of people with a lot of different views, and we may not get a, well, a compromising or maybe a complete opinion that everybody shares, but I do believe there's viable opinions and people have some good suggestions that we all can use. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to run for it, is to try to get involved. I really don't like to sit back and see people be upset and frustrated and not feel that they're getting what they want, not only out of schools, but maybe if it's in the city or elsewhere. And I think that there's a lot of people out there with a lot of good values and a lot of good work ethic that can get involved. If it's myself, all of us here sitting here, or all those of you watching on television here, that it's time to, you know, let's put our money where our mouth is, more or less, and get things going. Because I believe that it's passing is by, and I hope it's not too late. So hopefully I can answer some more questions for you later on in the program.
Good evening. My name is Greg Fein. I currently serve on the Missoula County High School School Board, or, jeez, I'm sorry, the Missoula County Public School School Board. In 1989, when I first ran for election, one of the questions that was asked of me as a candidate is whether or not I would support unification of the school districts. And it was something I believed very strongly in in 1989, and it's something that has come true. And the unification of the school district has brought me back to the school board. I chose to apply for a vacancy on the school board in October and was reappointed. The greatest, when asked if there need to, if more changes need to occur in the school district and with the board, right now I would say no. The greatest change that could possibly happen happened, and that was unification. It's an overwhelming and undaunting task, and it will be years before the unification process is complete, and we finally have a solidified, single district operating as one. The process is not easy, the process is very slow, it's very time-consuming, and it requires a great deal of patience. When I got back on the board, that's why I returned. I was very concerned that the board lacked high school experience. There was only one high school trustee sitting on the board with any experience of the longstanding problems the high school district faced. That doesn't mean that other trustees can't do a very good job, but when you are asked for history and you are asked for some kind of continuity, there was only one trustee, and that is a very great concern. I'm very happy with the way these districts are functioning right now. We are making great steps for site-based management. Both of the old boards were very supportive of a site-based management philosophy. We're not sure what that philosophy is yet, we're not sure how it's going to work, but we're taking some very real steps at the high school level. We transferred, two years ago, we transferred some budget authority for the high school principals to spend money as they saw how they needed at their local building. We're now in the process of doing that at the elementary level. The elementary board was very far into the strategic planning process of how to strategically plan so that surprises don't sneak up and bite you from behind. The high school board and the high school district was just beginning that process when the unification vote occurred. I'm very supportive of strategic planning, I think it's something that we need to do. There is no doubt that I am very concerned about curricular issues. I think we need to look at how we do things differently. The model that we currently have of where students sit in a classroom for an hour and are lectured to, or even try to have a class discussion and then get up and move, I'm not convinced that's the best model. I was very supportive of the eight-day rollover schedule at Big Sky, which is appearing to be a success. And it's also a success for site-based management, because we turned to the staff of Big Sky and said, "We want you to come up with an idea, and we will support you if we can." They came up with an idea, they donated some time, we donated some time, and it worked. So I know, I support how the board is going currently.
My name is John Rose, and of course I had a statement prepared all about the things that you don't want me to talk about. So I'll try to perhaps read through a little bit of it emphasizing how I agree and disagree with what the school board is currently doing and what I know of the schools. So I could start out by saying that I've recently been doing some attending of the school board meetings, and it's been very interesting. I have a young daughter of five years old who is attending Clark Fork School, which is a parent cooperative, and I have been involved with that school. So it's been interesting for me to see the differences with the public school versus a private institution, and I'm real interested because of the fact that I do have a daughter coming up into the public school system. The things that I was able to, in the last sense I've decided to run, address with, or the issues that have been presented in the meetings that I have attended recently have been, well, budgetary in nature, and that's interesting to me. I have some experience in fiscal management. I work at a local manufacturing company as a production manager, have some 10 years experience there. I deal with staffing and budgets and costing issues, and would very much like to put my work experience to work in the school board. The, let's see, I have not been able to sit in on a curriculum committee meeting. I would be interested to do that. My concerns with the curriculum that is currently in place is that we continue to expand it even in the face of budget cuts. I feel that we have an opportunity through parent involvement and perhaps site-based management to expand our curriculum without, even in the face of budget cuts. So that's something that I would support, either parent involvement, senior or voluntary citizen involvement. My support of the arts is very personal. The music programs that I experienced while I was going to school here in Missoula, I should say, I have been in Missoula for some over 20 years. Went to Rattlesnake Grade School, graduated from Hellgate High School, and went on in the music department at the University of Montana. So the arts are very important to me. I feel like they are a way for students, many students, to engage in the learning process, and I want to see that our curriculum does not suffer because of budget cutbacks. I am going to stop now.
The last time I was in this room, sitting up here, I was on the city council in 1976. I'm a parent of five boys who have attended high school in Missoula County, four of whom have graduated, and one is presently in school. My belief is, is that my experience in conflict resolutions would be very helpful with the board. I have a Juris Doctor degree in law and a Master's degree in social work, where I did work in public service administration. I have a private practice here in Missoula with clients throughout the United States. I also believe that the taxpayer needs to be given good value for its investment in education. I am very concerned that the increasing costs would work towards, and I would work towards rationalizing them. Education is a very labor-intensive matter. Quality education is directly related to the number of students and the teacher ratio. In that regard, I do support a low teacher-student ratio. I do not have any agenda. The only thing that I want to do is service to the community, of which I have time to attend the meetings and to work at this time.
Good evening. My name is Michael Kuplik. I first ran for the board, I guess it was about 1986. I've been on the board longer than anyone who is currently serving. When I ran for the board originally, there were basically two reasons that I ran for the board. The first were my three children. They're currently in Russell, Meadow Hill, and Sentinel, so I have a child in elementary, in middle school, and in high school right now. The desire to do something for the community, as they say, public service is the dues of a citizen. It's dues that a citizen must pay, and so that's the reason why I ran. Secondly, I thought that I could make a contribution. I teach at the university. My specialty is public finance. As such, I was familiar with budgets and thought I would like to do some non-academic work in the subject, and you certainly do. I have run for reelection, I guess this is the fourth term, mainly because it always seems like there's something that has been left undone, one more thing that I want to try to see to completion. We have just unified, we're right in the middle, we've only been unified now about nine months. There's many loose ends. The desire to try to protect the program of the districts, the desire to see unification through is probably the main reason why I'm currently running again. Thank you.
Before we start the second section, we're going to ask all of you that have completed those Yellow Pages surveys to pass them in the aisle, and if Paul, if you could collect them. We'll try to let you know by the end of the evening how you voted on the top three issues facing the school board here in Missoula. The second part of this program, we're going to start in reverse direction, so you'll hear from Michael again. And members of the New Party are going to ask each candidate two questions based on the surveys that they sent back to us. And in the time of, for the sake of time on this part, we're going to ask the candidates to try to give an explanation of their answer in a minute or less. We know that's going to be tough, and we won't hold it against you, but we just want to get on to the part where the audience can actually speak to you themselves. So we'll start with the first questions. So, we'll start with the first questions.
So, this is for Michael Kuplik. Twice in your survey, you mentioned your support for developing a strong program in your reference to curriculum. Could you tell us what you consider a strong program to be?
A strong program would be a holistic program. When I talk about a strong program, I'm talking about such things as writing across the curriculum, the introduction of the arts into all aspects of the curriculum, not so much a division where you go for 50 minutes and you do geometry and then you go for 50 minutes, but rather a, uh, program in which there's integration. This is very necessary because these aren't really dichotomous subjects that they're, that they're studying, that they're all related. This is my idea of a strong program in one minute or less.
Fine. And the second question is, you stated that one of the three most critical issues facing the Missoula public school system is developing a consistent and stable funding base. What do you believe are the top two or three steps for the board to take in pursuit of this goal?
The problem, I ain't talked an hour on this, but I have a minute. The problem with, with the funding is that every year it's different. We didn't even know until last Tuesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday of the previous week, what our special education allotment would be so that we could set the mill levy for the meeting that we had, the regular board meeting that we had. Right now, the legislature is talking about changing the schedule, and that's the payments for A and B, average number belonging. Every single year, if we go in for an increase, we put the entire mill levy at jeopardy. There is not a, a stable funding source so we know how much money we have. If we knew that, the planning would be much easier. There is a bill before the House right now that says that the budget is, proposes that the budget be set and that you only vote on increases. I would think that would be a good start.
Thank you.
Yes, my questions are for Jane Sadler. In your ser-, this has to be down, I'm sorry. In your survey, you state that the Missoula community expects teachers to impart pro-American, Eurocentric values to students. Why do you believe that?
Because I believe that, uh, the way to, there's many ways to view a curriculum and when you're choosing books and so forth. One of them is, is a, is when you say Eurocentric, meaning the worldview as, as it is viewed from, by Americans and by Europeans, and I do believe that.
In your survey, you state that the greatest problem of passage of local mill levies is that people do not believe that they are getting their money's worth. What changes need to take place in the public school system so that people feel that they are getting their money's worth?
Well, I am a parent of five children, four of whom have graduated, one who is still in high school. The, uh, one of the great advantages of having children go, gone through the target range school system is the, the low parent, I mean, uh, student-teacher ratios. People, when you go to sell your home and so forth, you usually, people in the target range areas are always bragging that this is a good school system, that this is a good place to live. Now, I don't necessarily hear the same type of, of support for, for the high school system. And I think this is, and we need to work better on the low, on the student-teacher ratios, and that's what I, why I don't think people believe that is happening now and it should happen. It's one of the things I would work for.
Thank you.
Okay, my questions are for John Rose. In your survey, you state that addressing budgetary constraints in a realistic, yet creative way is one of the most critical issues facing the Missoula public school system. Do you have specific, realistic, yet creative ways to deal with budgetary constraints?
I would, I would consider the matter for quite a bit longer before I were to answer very specifically, but from my experience, I know that in the education, in the school that I'm involved in, there is a lower cost per student, a lower cost per student cost than there is currently in the public school system by about 30 percent. And I believe that a good portion of that is because of the involvement of the parents in doing a lot of the tasks that are required to operate a school. I'm not advocating supplanting teachers or staff, but actually supplementing the infrastructure that's there. So, that would be one idea that I would have.
Second question. Your survey indicates that you believe that we need to involve the community more in education issues in order to pass mill levies. Do you have specific ideas on how to further involve the public?
I hate to sound like a broken record, but if they were in the schools, they would know what our needs were and be much more sympathetic. I guess that would be one very big suggestion.
Okay, thank you. This question is for Greg Fein. You stated that one of the three most critical issues facing the Missoula public school systems is to spend our scarce dollars in a way that maintains the best possible education system. Do you have any specific spending ideas in mind?
I think, I think that my specifics would be more in where we are going to be forced to cut, if we are forced to cut. And I know I addressed that later in the survey. We, I believe that we do get a, a good bang for the dollar, and I'm sorry that there seems to be a perception that we don't. There is no doubt, though, that the resources are scarce. We are, we are trying to, Staff Chief Charlo administratively cost, with, on a cost-neutral basis. In other words, not adding new dollars to the, to the budget for administrative needs. We also do not want to take a building administrator out of a building for half a day. So, sometimes you need to do creative things, and, and I will not take credit for this, but I could certainly support it. You can use an administrator and pay part of their salary out of the elementary budget. They're an elementary principal, but perhaps give them another task and pay that out of the secondary budget. So, there are a lot of things that we can do, but we have to make, we have to make sure we're utilizing the dollar best we can.
And the second one, in your survey, you state both that the school districts are not wasting money and that the public believes waste is widespread. How can you explain this disparity?
Again, I think perception versus reality, it may not be the case. I have been on the board long enough to remember that when I first got on the board, we didn't worry about programs that cost $10,000. It was a small amount of money to worry about. Approximately three or four years ago, the high school budget was so thin and so lean that we eliminated a $10,000 program called the Lay Reader Program out of the English Department. And it was one of the first times that the board really went in and started looking for ways to cut. We are not over-administered, over-administrated at all. If anything, we need, we need a few more administrators, certainly at the elementary level at our middle schools, where we have some administrators who are, who are watching over 600 students and have one part-time administrator help. That, we can't do that. We need, we need, they need more help, but where do you find the money? The consortium, the curriculum consortium that the high school used to belong to, we shared a person to help develop curriculum across the entire county. We have eliminated a great deal of waste. I'm not saying there isn't waste there, but I, the fat is gone. We've cut it. We're, now we're down to bone. Next time we cut, we're not cutting fat anymore.
Thanks.
A couple of questions for Mike Hodges. Mike, you state that the Missoula school board should definitely take a more assertive role in state financing. Would you suggest two or three actions that the board should take in the future that they are not taking now, addressing the state level, please?
Yeah, I believe that there should be a lot more direction headed toward Helena, if it's getting there, getting to the legislators, appealing to them as much as possible to get that funding that's needed to help, if it's a program that needs to be implemented in the schools. The direction that should be gone is just, I think, constant communication between those that represent us in respective districts in Missoula that are in Helena. And, you know, other means, we have other channels that we can get across to our legislators to try to appeal for more money. And I know that they're under the same constraints much that a school board would be about finding the money to fund these programs and maybe diverting them from one area to another to get them across so they can be funded. It, it's difficult. I realize that there isn't an exact science to go by getting this money, but I believe that there are ways through a significant process could get these funds needed for our programs within the schools.
Thanks, Mike. You're one of four candidates who support a voucher system. Could you tell us why the public should support your election to the school board when you believe that people should be given the option to not pay for public schools?
Well, I believe for the sake that if they do have a choice, and that's one of the key things that I've looked at, when I thought about that, and I did respond to it, is that I believe, and I went through private schools for three years of my life, the rest were public, including higher education as well. And I believed in the three years that I had seen there in the private schools as well in the public schools, that there should be a point where parents can decide for their children's sake whether they want them to go to the private or the public schools. You know, I'm not saying that the public schools are the panacea to everything out there, and I know that a lot of private schools do a lot of things, good things to teach children. I got a lot out of it during my experience during those years. And that's where it boils down, in my opinion, the debate would be with the voucher saving, voucher system, is that those that decide not to use the public school system should not have to pay for the sake, for the sake that if they are involving their kids in that school, that they don't have the money, that they can put it toward other education that they feel their children will get more out of.
My questions are for Jan Guffin. Jan, you stated that some of the most difficult challenges that face educators today is the lack of adult supervision when kids are at home, and combining that with the amount of TV and videos that kids watch. What, if anything, do you feel the school board can do about these issues?
That's a tough question. I suppose if everyone on the school board agreed with those views, we could spread the word that we thought certain things might make a difference. I believe reading is a key to learning, and before TV was so prominent, there was a lot more reading going on. I also think that a lot, society has gotten more complicated. The lives of children has become more complicated as there are more, two parents per family in the workforce, and more single parents. And I don't believe there is as much support at home for children doing schoolwork, not necessarily by choice either, which makes it harder to educate children today. I don't believe educators today.
You ranked salaries, technology, and buildings of equal importance and hope that they would all be funded. Given the likelihood that Missoula schools are going to face cuts, how would you prioritize these funding needs?
Since I filled out this survey, I've become aware of the critical state of the high school buildings, and I believe that as a responsibility to the taxpayers of Missoula County who own these buildings, they have to be maintained. So, that would be at the top of my list, especially the safety concerns. The schools would be nowhere without the teachers. That's, that's an essential. Salaries, technology is very high. I'm afraid we may not prepare our children very well for the world of work they'll be entering tomorrow if they don't know technology, because there's scarcely a field out there that doesn't use technology. But that would come below the other two on my list.
Thanks, Jan. Okay, two questions for Bob Grau. You state in your survey that the toughest challenge facing modern educators is teaching current and historical events objectively in today's highly opinionated world. What do you mean by this statement?
I knew that one would come up. What I mean by that statement is, a lot of times, I'll, I think you folks can probably deal with this also, or at least relate to it the way I do. We've all had good teachers and we've all had bad teachers, and we know the difference. In today's world with what with the radio talk shows and the hype, the daily talk shows on television, there's a lot of opinions being formulated that basically don't always hold to fact. And sometimes I see this running over in the school system. Now, I have three children, they're all three in Bonner, and the older boy has mentioned some of these kind of things that come out. What I'm talking about on this is teachers that bring out their own opinion ahead of maybe class discussion, trying to bring out an agenda. This doesn't always happen, but a lot of times I see it in a younger teacher, somebody that comes in, and we all know how we are when we were younger, starting out. We want to change the world, and we have formulated opinions. And my own, my own idea on this is maybe just to maybe let the, the school or the folks, if, let, let these younger teachers know that maybe we ought to open up the classroom a little more. I guess that's kind of vague, but that's kind of the way I feel about it.
Okay. You are one of four candidates who support a voucher system. Could you tell us why the public should support your election to the school board when you believe that people should be given the option to not pay for public schools?
I forgot to mention also, my wife's a teacher, and I heard about that one when I sent that in. And, okay, what I feel about the voucher system, after I found out more about it, because I've researched it since I filled that out, and I'm not necessarily for the way they want to set the voucher system up. The way I understand it, it's a one-time voucher, and then after that, you'd be forced to go ahead and pay your own way. So, once again, the kids really aren't given a choice of what type of school they'd go to if they'd have to. Once again, it's the elite, maybe those with a little more money be able to go and afford that school system. I think that all schools should be available to all students. I also think that it would promote better competition. If the private school system started drawing more children across, maybe it'd be time for the public system to look at that and say, "Why is that happening? What's going on? What are we doing wrong?" Vice versa. The salaries in some of those public schools are awful for those teachers. Maybe those teachers, if they started sitting back and say, "Well, if we're going to draw these kids over, we're going to have to have good teachers brought in. When we get those good teachers, we have to raise the salaries to do it." I think it'd balance out all the systems. That's the reason I was supporting what I thought was the voucher system. I don't support it necessarily the way it's set up right now.
Okay, thanks.
Before we get to your questions, we'd like to let you know sort of the results of your impromptu surveys here.
Thanks for filling these out. The, I just counted the top three categories which came up the most often. Is it on? Can you hear? Can you hear now? Yes, okay. The top three categories that came up most often were these. The first was maintaining high-quality education with the limited resources that we have and not eroding our educational budget any further than it already is. That was certainly the most often mentioned. Second was incorporating ethnic diversity into the curriculum and not discriminating against minority students. And the third was maintaining teacher salaries. A couple of other things that got some mentions, I think, are worth a quick mention here, too. More parent and citizen involvement and community-supportive schools, and better use and more use of technology.
This is, yeah, this is on again.
This is, yeah, this is on again. We're now going to let you take over, and we're going to just ask you to please come up to the mic so that the candidates can hear you and the rest of the audience. Try to keep your questions as focused as possible for the candidates, and then we're going to ask the candidates to do their best again to try to answer them within a minute or so. We have some time for this section. We'd like you to be able to give good answers to the audience's questions. So if you have a question, please come right up to the mic, and you can direct it to a particular candidate or a couple candidates if you'd like, and we'll try to mix it around so everybody gets a chance to answer.
I've heard from a number of you saying cuts. I've also heard perception versus reality. Do you actually know if there has been any cuts? Anybody?
Have there been cuts? There have been cuts. I guess I'd like you to, if you could expand on your question. Have there been reductions in the amount of money that was spent this year versus last year, last year versus the year before, the year before? No, there have not been reductions in the overall amount of money that the school district has spent, and I'll be very upfront about that. There have been a couple of years where certain funding sources have been reduced, where the elementary district's enrollment is not increased or decreasing, and we also took a very large cut from the state legislature. They lowered their amount, the amount of money during the special session, some $20 million statewide. Most of that at Missoula was made up. We were allowed to go back to the public, and they made it up on the property tax. But there are very real cuts as money has been moved around the district to pay for other things.
But as far as Missoula County and the schools, you haven't gotten any cuts. The taxpayers here have made up what the state has cut, right?
In most cases, they have. No.
Now, my...
The legislator...
You're allowed your 4%.
Cut us 4 and 1/2%. We made up 4% in a special election.
So if you have money to use for the educational system to maintain it, and there's a lot of things you want, and you manage to get what you need to maintain the system, but what you want is cut, do you consider that a cut?
I don't buy your premise, no. What has happened is that the amount of money that the school districts have been given has not kept up with inflation. There has been increases in salaries. What you're seeing is reallocation within the system. When we say there has been cuts or someone talks about cuts, those are very real cuts because more money has to go into paper because the price of paper has increased by 11%. We don't buy any more paper. We get the same amount of paper, but yet we have to pay more money for it. In order to make up for the increases that have taken place in some areas, other areas have to be cut. In terms of the elementary budget, the Excel program was cut 25%. The...
Excel, excuse me, the Excel program?
The Excel program was cut by 25%.
Could you explain Excel program?
Beg your pardon?
Can you explain the Excel program?
Yes, it's the gifted and talented program that we're required to run by law. The state of Montana requires every school district to have a gifted and talented program, and the Excel program is what we call our gifted and talented program. It was cut by 25%. The elementary music program was cut, and so on.
Okay, excuse me, the buildings are deteriorating, although they should have been maintained. You've gotten your levies passed, you've gotten your money, but the buildings are corroding supposedly. The books are outdated. A lot of parents are questioning how great is the education is that their children are getting. It's not quality anymore. But you mentioned teacher's salaries. What's the average teacher's salary here? Do you know what the average salary of the average Montana is?
Does the average Montana have a master's degree with 30 hours?
Well, that doesn't matter.
You're comparing oranges and apples, and you can't really compare the two.
Can I respond to that, ma'am? Is it okay? I agree with you on that. I really do. Not, it's not just because you have a master's degree or a degree in, a doctorate's degree or any other degree. There's a degree out there, those Rhodes Hard Knocks degrees out there, they're mighty hard to come by also. And those folks work hard for that money. They work real hard, and they don't get paid enough, and I agree with you. I own a business, and I have employees, and we try to keep it up, but it's awful tough out there anymore. And I'll tell you something. I worked for the executive board for the university a few years back, and it was an advisory position for the president. And one of the things we pushed on there at the time was the fact we wanted to see the vocational schools brought up and not set in a class system. I hate this class system, and a lot of time education, higher education will run it. You've got the doctorates, the masters, the folks in vocation, those with a high school degree, and the rest of us really work for the living. I want to tell you something. What we did is we forced them to bring that vocational school into the university, give those folks an associate degree, at least they've got something. And the responses we're getting back is they're getting higher-paid jobs. They're getting more recognition for this. I agree with you. I think I know what you're asking about that cut situation. Are they going to turn around and say, just because there's a cut?
I'm also asking...
Ma'am, ma'am, could we just make sure that there aren't other people that have some questions, too?
Okay, because I just want to, I haven't gotten my question asked if they know how much teachers make in this state.
Okay, maybe after a few more questions, you can, if people are done. We just want to get as many people participating as possible. Thanks.
Well, the average is $30,000.
One thing, I would like to respond to something she said, that she doesn't believe our students are getting a quality education. And one thing, I've been on this board since 1989, and as a board member, I will never apologize for any salary that any worker in our district earns, from people who cook in the kitchens to our superintendent. I will not ever apologize. It's negotiated. We, it is, they provide a valuable service. Sometimes I may, I may think that, I may believe that they are not, that perhaps they're paid more than what is in the public sector. We get very, very good work from these people, and I will never apologize for what we pay people. And for you to say that our students in Missoula are not quality students is very, very, very wrong. And it is insulting to the students, it is insulting to the students and the teachers. No, I didn't change your words. You said, well, that is saying then that our students aren't competing. Our students are competing at the national level. We send students, we have three students from Missoula right now, I know of, that are at Harvard University in their undergrad program. Our top students go, our top students and our middle students do very, very well. And when people say we don't have a quality education in Missoula, they are dead wrong.
I'm interested in the, can you hear me? Okay. I'm interested in the psychosocial needs of children, especially in whether those are being addressed in our curriculum and the way that we are understanding classroom versus free time or recess or lunch. And I'm wondering if there's anybody who has, anybody, any of the candidates who have a focus on that, anything to say about that from a developmental perspective, from a parent perspective, and if you have any ideas on how we address that, in the sense that at least in the grade schools there, we have duty aides who are out on the playground who don't have access necessarily to the classroom teachers. So what is happening on the playground is there's a gap between what's happening in different arenas, and I think I have an agenda that we, that we understand that the playground is a unique environment for learning. And if a lot of people look back into their life, I know I learned a lot on the playground, and I don't remember a lot of the other dry curriculum, so.
Anybody out there?
I don't know quite how to respond to that. Since I have more time on the board, I'll respond. And I'm not quite sure what you're saying. I think I understand. Actually, with recess in the elementary schools, we do have teachers out there, and indeed we are counting recess now as contact time with regard to OPI and average number belonging. So we are required, and indeed we do try to do that, have some sort of program that, you don't want to structure them too much, you understand that, out on the playground. Lowell is one that comes to mind with the, one of the aggression resolution things that we did, right? And that was, that was done. Now, the problem with the lunch hour is that if a teacher's out there, the teacher doesn't get any lunch, and the teacher doesn't get a break. So we hire people to spell the teacher, but it isn't a bad idea that perhaps they could come a little earlier and leave a little later, so there could be some classroom interaction.
My question was for Ms. Guffin, and it had to do with sex education, including STDs and AIDS in elementary schools, and whether or not you would support that as part of the curriculum?
I do support it. My preference would be that children are taught that at home by their parents. That isn't always the case. Sometimes it's very difficult for even the most well-intentioned parents to talk to their kids about these topics. And I think today with our fear of AIDS and the wake of death, it would be remiss for the school system not to teach children facts about sex ed and AIDS. I think the value should be taught in the home, not in the schools. And I do support the district's policy of opt-out, so that parents who do object to specific classes and presentations have the right to have their kids sit out.
Well, thank you all for running. This is a big job, and we really, as a community, ask an awful lot of the board members, and I'd like to increase the burden a little bit and ask, and I think everyone could perhaps answer this because it's just a very brief answer. How much time have each of you spent in an elementary classroom in the last year, a middle school classroom? Not as a head of state visiting the classroom, but as, just as a quiet observer, in a high school classroom, in an Excel classroom, in a special ed classroom? Thank you.
Ma'am, if I could ask just one second before you sit down, exactly, was there something that you said in there that we're looking for, that you want us to look for if we did go into one of these classrooms?
Did you spend any time in any of those classrooms?
Or just to observe how things were run, or, oh, okay.
Do you understand what you're talking about?
Well, to be honest with you, I have not. The only experience I can remember having is obviously sitting in a chair myself and being part of the class. I'd probably have to go back and to look and see what it's like to be in a classroom like that again. I'd be curious to see what it's like. There's probably a lot of things that maybe would bring back some recollections of the past and also shed some light on some new things for now. Just, I guess I'm kind of confused because I thought maybe within that question, you may have asked something specific that would have, that something you wanted us to notice that maybe you thought...
Just experience-based?
Just experience-based? Okay, yeah. I, just being in there, no, I haven't seen anything, but I would like to go back and see what they're like again.
You asked us to rule out the quote, I think you called them head of state visits. There are very formal portions of our visits, and then there are very informal portions of our visits. So the informal portion I've really enjoyed because it allows you to just pick which room you go in and out of, and you just kind of sit in the back, and they all look at you and they go, wow, you're really big. I can say at high school, I was up at Sealy Swan. Just very recently, I conducted a Robert's Rules of Order seminar for their student government to try to help their student government get going, and I would have done that regardless of whether I was on the board or not. Being a recent graduate from the University of Montana, and Professor Haber can attest to the fact that I maybe didn't have great attendants when I was there, but I'm still a little frightened of classrooms. But I have tried to get into some, to get some more elementary experience because I have very little there. The high school, I have a very good rapport with the high school teachers, and I still have a number of friends who are high school age, so I feel I have a pretty good grasp of what's going on there. But at elementary, they have been official head of state visits, but there is an informal portion there that allows us to go in and out of classrooms. And I hope to volunteer this spring to do reading. The principal at Emma Dickinson has left me a number of voicemail messages to remind me that I promised to do that. So if my schedule allows me, I hope to get back to do that.
I'm happy to say that Mrs. Beltramo's first grade had me in there twice a week for an hour each time. My daughter was in the class at the time, of course. I have helped out, that was on a regular basis. I also have helped out with my children. I volunteer. Probably my least experience is with the high school, although I did do Exchange Day where my son was supposed to go to the university and teach, but he refused, and I did his schedule instead. But it does give you an idea of how it runs.
I have had some experience at being a teacher's aide twice a week all year. Last year, my daughter's preschool, and then I also taught music once a week there. I led the music class. And I was also on the playground for the K through 3 in that school. I'm also an active, for the last four years, have been active with the Young Audiences of America, which is a national program that takes classic arts into the schools. And I've traveled all over Montana. Our program that we have is aimed at the middle schools, but we have had a range of children attend, and that's ranged from very small classes in a relatively close environment to assembly-type to-dos, up to 350 kids at a time. So we do that several times, every dozen times a year.
I've had several experiences in high school and grade schools. First of all, I have a special interest in special education, having ED children. You do not support children in high school without, especially if they have problems, that you become very familiar with the teachers and the programs. I have, I also helped work at the Big Sky High School when they were doing their schedule change. I was one of the parents who was involved, that was helped develop the new schedule there. I attended those meetings and talked to teachers and at the school. I'm at the Western Fair, I'm the, I work in the horticulture department. I'm the new superintendent of floriculture, and I'm very active in garden clubs and horticulture in Montana and in Missoula. And in that light, I give presentations in grade schools on plants that I grow in my garden and that are native and wildflowers here. One of my sons is very involved with homing pigeons. He gives presentations, and I, along with that, I have given presentations. In fact, we're leaving tomorrow morning, and we're giving presentations in three grade schools here in western Montana. Those presentations usually take about 30 minutes or so, and they're a lot of fun, and you learn a lot while you're there by the questions. And the letters of thank you that we receive back are absolutely heartrending. And so I do feel I do have some classroom experience. I am not a teacher, however, while I was, I graduated in 1990 in Portland State University, and while I was there, I was a teaching assistant during the time I was there.
Since my children started in the schools, I've been in the schools, working in classrooms from kindergarten up. Last year, I was in my fourth grader's classroom once a week. This year, I don't work in his fifth grade classroom, but I do work in the library at Paxton Weekly and the library at Washington Weekly. I accompany band students as they practice for the solo and ensemble day in three of the middle schools and in the grade schools, if I could ask. I've been in the music classes and the band classes in the grade schools and the middle schools. When my son went to high school at Hellgate, he asked that I not come and be seen. When my son went to high school at Hellgate, he asked that I not come and be seen. I went to parent meetings, but I stayed scarce, so that he wouldn't run into me in the halls. I have helped some at Loyola, where I have a daughter. I have another daughter who will be going into Hellgate High School next year, and she says she doesn't mind if I'm there volunteering. So, maybe I'll find my way around the library.
Well, the things I did with my wife a little bit, she's a kindergarten teacher out of Bonners, which she does, and that's quite an experience. I don't go into the classroom too often, because I think I mess her up. But I sometimes will stand outside and watch, and, because usually, I'm down to pick up my daughter, if, when she's getting out of hers, and it's quite an experience. She relates quite a few interesting stories home to me. I've helped my kids somewhat in Odyssey of the Mind. Two years ago, my one boy went to the world finals over in Washington DC, which was quite a thrill. I got, I wasn't official coach, but I got to tag along, carry everything, and that was a job. Then last year, I took an OM team, and we went to state with another boy I have. And we did all right with that, too. Had a lot of fun with it. It's an experience working with kids that age. That was about, those were fifth graders. And they're just starting to learn a lot of things you don't think they know yet, and that's kind of tough to work with. And of course, I've done all the other stuff you do with two boys and a little girl. We've been to Little League, and basketball, and football, and ballerina, and music lessons, and, you know, it keeps going and going. They do a lot more than I did as a kid, and I think it's great. I really do. That's about it.
More questions from anyone?
First of all, I'd like to read this news release from the paper, the Missoulian, Friday, October 15, 1982. From Helena, "The Montana Supreme Court Thursday disbarred Missoula lawyer James Sadler following the voluntary surrender of his license to practice law and his resignation from the state bar. The court gave no background for the action, and the court files on the matter were sealed. The order said only that complaints had been received with respect to conduct of James H. Sadler in connection with his law practice."
Sir, do you have a question? Because if you don't, I think it's not appropriate at this time to be making statements about candidates. We're here to ask candidates questions, not make statements. If you could, please.
Well, do I get it later on tonight?
Well, maybe you can talk. If you have a question to him personally, you can talk to him. We're not here to, we're here to try to talk about questions regarding the school board.
I thought possibly we'd have a chance to question some of their background, in case maybe we don't think they make good people on the board.
Well, maybe you can put it into a question, then.
Okay, James, I'll ask you this, then. I've been told that it is a very serious reason when a lawyer is disbarred by the Supreme Court. Ladies and gentlemen of our Missoula community, we do not want Jim Sadler on our school board working with our tax dollars, or more seriously, not working with the education of our children. Mr. Sadler, would you please comment on this?
Well, first of all, I think your question's very mean-spirited. And I think it's driven out of a controversy that has happened at the vocational department at the, at Big Sky High School. Last year, I was at the vocational department, and I noticed a dump that was being developed by, with a D8 cat that opened up a pit. And in that pit was deposited barrels of chemicals, dead animals, and various sundry things like shingles and, from a roof, and carpeting. I reported that to the EPA, because I felt that the high school was involved in a matter which was environmentally unsound. And I then, the matter then was turned over to them. I understand now. I was down to the health department today and talked to Shannon there, and she tells me that the two teachers involved have in fact pled guilty to the, and were fined for it. Now, I believe this is the reason for your saying this mean-spirited thing. I don't know where you feel that I was disbarred, because I was not disbarred. I resigned underneath a severe emotional stress at the time, in 1982. I had a large building contracting firm, which was going through terrible finances. I had a wife who was in the process of dying of cancer. My brother, my father, my mother, my, were all, all died that year. It was simply impossible for me to continue as a practicing attorney, so I turned over my practice to others. Now, this is a long time ago, and I, and it is 1982. I think in the spirit of what people in Montana have always been, is that you allow people to do a fresh start and to let bygones be bygones. And I'm sorry if you feel the way you do. I don't apologize for the matters that happened back in 1982. I did the best I could underneath the time. I don't feel that this is reflected upon me and my candidacy. I just think it's mean-spirited upon your part to bring this up in a fashion that would yield the greatest embarrassment to me. But I tell you the truth, I'm not embarrassed. I welcome the opportunity for everybody here to hear this. Whisper Campaign and Mr. Greel's campaign, I was told, was created out of this controversy of my reporting, out of the VOAG. And this is, it should be out in the open. I believe that everybody should have free access to whatever you feel. I have spent many years in this community, 28 years here. I have my children been raised here. I didn't leave this community. I have worked in this community, and I have done many good things. And I would trust that the citizens around here, who trust me, will judge me upon what I have done, and the good works I have done. And I'm sorry you feel the way you do, and you're, if you do not wish to vote for me, well then, don't vote for me. But many of my friends do support my candidacy. I was asked to run for this position. Many people came to me because of my experience in education and my ability at conflict resolution. And I'm sorry you feel that way, but I do feel I am the best candidate for this, and I ask everybody else to vote for me.
I'd just like to make a comment, too. Jim, I'm sorry, something like that came up, but I do want to mention, my campaign was not derived at your expense, or for any other reason on that. My campaign was exactly what I said. I came into this thing to represent my community, and I was contacted by my folks, and I was also contacted by some folks in Target Range. One of them happened to be my wife's cousin. And they asked me if I would want to run, because they wanted me to run. They did mention that they didn't want Jim in, but that reason I am not interested in, I never was. I wanted a clean campaign, and that's what I feel about this. And I agree with you, Jim, bygones are bygones, and pass are passed. And I don't agree with that at all. So, I just want that understood also, Jim.
Any other further questions?
I have a couple of questions, one to all of you, and then one in particular to Jan Guffin. As a Native American in this community, and with the organizations that I work with, there have been a number of complaints brought to my attention, that there are discriminatory practices being conducted in, within the school system against minorities, and in particular, Native Americans. And I wonder, with the incumbents, if you are aware of this, and with the candidates, what your suggestions are against discriminatory, regarding discriminatory practices against minorities? And for Ms. Guffin, your statement, and I wrote this down, and I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. I think this is absolutely great, and it certainly shows your interest in serving on the school board. Your statement on there is too much TV at home and not enough adult supervision, I would question, my question to you is how, as a school board member, you would propose to deal with that particular issue? And again, thank you all for coming out.
I guess as an incumbent school board member sitting on the board, and I would not want you to get specific at a public forum, but I would cer, if discrimination of any type against any, any member of our student population, or a member of our staff, is, should be, is not, I would not tolerate, and I don't think this board would tolerate. I thought we were making some gains, at least with our student population. When we were at Hellgate last spring, there was, there was some discussion that there was a Native American group that was starting to take a very active presence at Hellgate, and some real pride in the Native American culture and their Native American history. I had the fortune to hear the Native American Student Association do a drum dance at the beginning of a choral fest, a choral concert at Hellgate. My family, I'm adopted, but my family has Native American blood in it, and unfortunately, my grandmother doesn't have that, the proud, she doesn't feel proud that she has, that she's, has some Native American blood, and I think that's very sad. I think it's something to be very proud of. I would hope that if there is actual discrimination going on against anyone in the district, that there are avenues where that can be reported. And if those, if that avenue is not, if it doesn't fix it, there are places where you can go next. I think you will find that we have a superintendent right now that would not tolerate discrimination of any form, based for any reason. It does not belong in the school district, and I think we need to take greater steps. We have a very large Hmong population in our schools, and we are trying to make sure that they, you know, they are, they are trying to overcome discrimination that they have faced. And I can point to numerous things that we did while I was in high school to try to overcome some discrimination issues. But it does not belong in our public schools. But if you have very concrete areas where it's happening, it needs to be reported, it needs to be taken care of, and it needs to be stopped, period.
I'd like to also respond, and I think I had a, there's, the school district, as you know, receives certain funds for Indian people. And how they obtain these funds is they do what they call a eyeball survey. Those people who look like they're Indian, that is, if they're, or if they have an Indian name, are included on the survey. Those which, as you know, there are two types of ways to identify if you're an Indian person. And one is self-identification, and another is by, in tribal enrollment. Not all Indian people look Indian. And some people look very Indian and are not Indian at all. And I've always thought it was a rather racist attitude that is happening now in these surveys of the teachers having to do an eyeball survey, and it is quite ridiculous. How to solve it? One way to solve it would be is to involve the Native American community and to ask that they self-identify the children that are in need, and so that the school will, can count these children. I understand that the federal guidelines are such now that you cannot ask people what race they are. But there is surely a way at which you can involve the community, so there could, those children who are Indian but may not look Indian can be, can in fact receive services.
After hearing this, I always felt that a lot of us were above that, that that step wouldn't go on. That felt that, at home, we were taught a little bit better, that it does not matter who the person is, what color they are, what race, creed, origin they be from, that we're all in this together. And to me, it seems a little bit barbaric, hearing the things that you're talking about, ma'am, and like Greg had said, not to open or air this in a public forum. You can kind of conjure up ideas to where something like that could happen, if you read about it in books, see it on TV or in movies. And I definitely would not tolerate, nor anything like that, if I heard about that, would be taken care of as soon as possible, because it seems like you're wasting a lot of people's time. That stuff, it's so petty that it does not belong. And we all should just, you know, keep that open mind, because everybody is there, I feel, to get the most out of the education that they can, and this really just detracts from it, because I think a lot of people may lose not only some self-confidence in themselves, but it definitely would make everybody look bad.
I'd just like to make one comment on that, too. I agree with both these fellows on that. I think one thing that happens with this, I think it gets sometimes prolonged or expanded upon in the newspapers and things, in indirect ways. And I get real tired of it, folks. It's like, you folks remember a while back, this gal that got the award? Jan mentioned it to me earlier tonight, the Hmong woman in the paper, and her daughter that both received national awards. It was the headlines in the paper that said, I believe it was Hmong, mother and child received national award. And I read it, and I thought, that seems awful silly. Why would they designate the fact she's Hmong? If it was a white woman, why would she say there's a white woman and child that got this award? And I thought, why not just this mother and child? This is what I'm getting real tired of hearing all the time. Can't these people in the newspaper just designate a person by their name and forget what race they are? That's what I, I really think a lot of that gets promoted through the, through these. Do you feel the same way, ma'am?
Well, I don't mind you designating me as that. I'm very proud of this child.
But, but do you feel that maybe sometimes what I'm saying is, is that it's almost, the way I read it, almost like that we should have felt, well, that's really an achievement, because she was Hmong? And I thought, why? This is a very intelligent woman. Why should we designate her? I realize she's proud, and I am too, and my heritage is, you should be of yours. That's very important, but I don't feel it should be always labeled, everybody labeled when they get set in those situations. Are you in agreeance with that, or how do you feel?
I'm not aware of instances in the grade schools and the middle schools that I've worked in of discrimination against minorities. And I'm curious to know if you're referring to children to children, or staff to children?
Oh.
I do think that would be inexcusable and should not be tolerated. I have seen heartbreaking instances of children with special needs in regular elementary school classrooms being shunned and taunted by their students. And I think teachers have done what they can do. It's impossible to protect children the entire time they're at school. I don't have any easy answers. Maybe a lot of it begins at home. But as a board member, if I were a board member, I would certainly investigate and do what I could to make sure that didn't happen. And to your question for me about what children do at home, I don't know, as a board member, if a person can do anything about that. I think that's something that educators today face in a much larger way than they did when we were children in school. And I think it's made educating today's children harder, and has eaten up a lot of free time they might have done more constructive things with 20, 30, 40 years ago. But I'm afraid most of that will have to come from home life and not from a school board.
I'm very sorry to hear that there's discrimination going on. Unfortunately, I'm not entirely surprised. It's pretty prevalent, I understand. So, I think that what we can do to work against that is to introduce children with, well, the instance that I'm thinking of is discrimination against a particular person who had a disability. But obviously, to include everybody in the group and not segregate for education, I know that that may not have been the case here. The funding that is available, I believe, is directed specifically to Native American children. And I'm not positive on the program, I'm not familiar with the program, but it would make sense to me to include... I am not familiar with the program, but it would make sense to me to include coping skills and social, you know, skills of how to deal with such things when they occur. I would, I would certainly hope that that would be a portion of how those monies are spent. So I believe in, certainly in expanding our curriculum to be much more, to include the diversity in, of the community as well as the rest of the world. I think that we've been a little bit, well, that, we've been lax in that area for a long time, and we need to revamp our, our curriculum in that regard to include that.
I, I don't know of any specific incidents. I do know that board policy specifically forbids discrimination against any student for this reason. There, there is also remedy under board policy, Board Policy 6800. If you feel that there has been an incident, all you have to do is, is, is just call, you can call the superintendent directly. As, as Greg said, this won't be tolerated. If it is student to student, it is harder to handle, but still can be handled. And, and I, I urge you that if you indeed feel this way, not to just say, this is happening, but to take action.
Any final questions from the audience?
Well, I too want to thank you for your interest and involvement in running for school board, and of course, I want to ask you a controversial question, which is always the kind that, that comes up. And Jan and Michael had a chance to address a little bit this AIDS education issue that sits, I think, in a lot of our minds, because often it represents a basic view about education and values and families and those kinds of things. And I think I could tell you my opinion, but I'm not as interested in that as, as hearing yours, in that what are we doing in this situation where we're trying to work with children, teaching them how to make good decisions in a risky world? Where do you come with your particular view of what the role of schools would be here and what kinds of curriculum you support? So maybe we could just go down the line, Bob, if you'd start us out.
Okay. I agree with Jan. I think there should be AIDS education in the school. I don't, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I'm not familiar with what's designated as such right now, what the costs are, or exactly what the program is. I realize it's there, and I'm glad it is, but I don't know what the extent of it, so I'd, I'd want to look into that further if I became a, a board member on that situation. As far as the values go, there's a fine line between teaching values and, and showing values. I don't think taught values are really something that wants to be designated on a piece of paper. Then you get into certain situations like we had Nazi Germany and other ideas, I, I don't blame communism or whatever, because you start letting the government dictate what is right and what is wrong, and that, that shouldn't be done, that should be left at home. But I do believe there's certain concepts that I think a teacher can teach indirectly. I expect these, I, I wrote it down in my papers, and I don't know if anybody noticed it, but I expect it of, of my children, and, and I expect their teachers to be this way, too. I expect my children to be honest. I expect them to, to be courteous to people, and I expect them to be diligent in their work, and that's what I expect of educators. And I think if they teach this way, I think it'll come across. I'm kind of a home-based person. I, I believe that the education system should be taught and, and be brought around a smaller entity and a smaller community, and I think it's important we get the communities and the people involved back into the school. And even if, if it gets corny, it might sound corny, but if it means we start bringing in a few more fairs and some family picnics and, and have everybody come, not just the folks that are in the school, but everybody that's paying the bill, it becomes their school. They feel important with it. If they show up just to vote on bonds and levies, they lose touch with it. And I really think we need to bring the people back into the school systems.
Did I answer your question before? Well, basically, I believe that values need to come from the home. I think we're a mighty diverse population, and the beauty of this country is that we all have the right to be that way. And school is for education, but home is where parents can teach values to kids. P.S. There are values that I think teachers should teach. They're not values on these issues that stir up controversy, though. The values that I think students should learn from teachers are honesty and integrity and a, a real desire to learn, to pursue education, and to respect the rest of the population.
I can add a little bit more to, I, I know, I mentioned, I did mention it earlier when we started our opening statements. I believe that the school, if they can set something up with the parents to offer education along these lines, then great. They can do that with the parents' permission, and I believe they can work something out with, something within the school board, within the budget, that they could, if it's something maybe after school, I don't know, maybe implementing it with a regular curriculum, in my, in my opinion, would not be a great idea. Like Jan had said, I, it's, to me, it seems extremely simple when you get into AIDS education. Obviously, it takes two people to tango, more or less, and it seems like in these days where the more risks come into play with such a deadly disease as this, that it is critical that the kids do know about it and understand the risks that they are in. And however, kids are going to be out there running around, and we cannot be out there every minute of every day to tell them what to do and what not to do. We can provide them the right choices, give them the right direction, and what they do with it is hopefully the decisions that we give them, they, they use properly and use them to their own benefits and advantages. Because I can remember when I was told these things by my parents, they said, we can't be around you at every minute of the day, and so we are going to trust that you do make the right decision. And I believe if the confidence and the trust is between both parties, that at least that's been established. And I do believe that the, the schools can supplement that along with the parents somehow, and I think that's where the key issue lies. And to reiterate what Bob had said, too, that the, the community involvement. And that thing right there would, I believe, provide most of the education that I think this issue really needs.
I support the, the current program as it exists in District 1 and the current program as it exists in the county high school portion of the district. It's very simple. This kills you. And I'm very disturbed by the last reports that came out that showed that the fastest growing sector of AIDS new HIV cases are in heterosexual male and female ages 14 to 20. These are our kids. This kills you. I have been to one funeral this month of a very dear friend of our family's who's died of AIDS. I was notified last week that another good friend of mine from college is laying in a hospital in Seattle dying of AIDS. It doesn't matter how you catch it, it doesn't matter why you caught it, but we have to teach kids how not to catch it. Knowledge is power, and it's, it's not an issue of values, it is, it is an issue of knowledge. I believe in a sex ed program that teaches abstinence is okay. I mean, you can teach that it's okay to abstain, and there's a great organization out there right now that is of, of, of young men and women of all ages in college and, and high school who stand up and say, we abstain, we're abstaining until we're married. And I, I think that has to be a, a part of any sex ed program that says it's okay to abstain. But the fact of the matter is, is that since Adam and Eve's time, kids haven't been abstaining. And we have to recognize the fact that, that when my parents went through high school, the worst thing you could get could get geared up with a lecture from a doctor and a shot and a, and a whole bunch of social stigma. Well, the social stigma hasn't gone away, and now you die. And, and, and for me, that's it. And I'm about to say something, that I have come to terms with something, I have even come so far as to believe that we have to maybe even look at the high school level at the, at the, at the consideration of making condoms readily available. That's a big step for me, I'm pretty conservative, but you die. You die from this. You don't, it doesn't just kind of inconve- make your life inconvenient, it takes your life away. So this, I'm very passionate here. You die, and we need a program. It's that simple.
Well, in that, in that regard, I, I share some views with, with Mr. Fine. I too have lost a couple of friends to AIDS and feel like it would, it would be tremendously remiss to not provide the education. I had anticipated this question, so I asked some questions about what the curriculum, AIDS curriculum actually consisted of, and found out that in the lower grades, it's, it's information upon request and general discussion about good touch and bad touch. And in the upper grades, then, at the appropriate age, it becomes more specific. And again, I, as I understand it, then, the values are left to be taught at home and the information is given out at school. I think that's the appropriate, I, I agree with the current curriculum. I think we need to leave the values at home and give out the information at school.
When I was working in Portland and obtaining my master's degree in social work, I was a volunteer on the AIDS hotline, primarily working with teenagers calling in. I helped them access services, and I can tell you, it is heart-rendering with these kids. I do support the, the program that is presently in the school. I, I, I assume that it was a program that was developed with, with parental input, with, with lots of public politi- in, participation and so forth. I probably wasn't here when that, when that was happening, but I'm sure if, if that's the way it happened, and, and I have read the policy, and it's a good one.
When I was elected the first time, the elementary district did not have any health education at all. I believe Judy was on the committee at that time. It took us three years to get a health curriculum for the elementary past. I believe it is a good one, I supported it. It has since been amended with the AIDS program, the AIDS part of it, and indeed, it was, it was developed with parents, teachers, health experts, ministers, all on the committee. I supported the program as it was presented to the school board, I voted for it. I also support the opt-out. If there is a parent with, with some sort of problem with the program, they have the right to take their child out of it. We don't force it on them. However, it is there, and it is an active opt-out. You have to actively take your student out of the classroom, otherwise the student gets it. I support it.
Thank you, candidates. As Paul gives the final closing, for all of you that have been bold enough to stay through this two hours, we're going to pass out a sheet that summarizes the candidates' top three issues most important to the Missoula County school systems, and we'll thank you all for coming, and, and again, thank you all, candidates.
Yeah, I don't want to add very much, take up much more time. I just want to say, thank you very much for coming, and it's my hope that you got your questions answered, and it's my further hope and expectation that as questions arise, you'll be able to bring them to the board, because I really sensed from all of you an agreement that running the public schools is a very big job, and there is real room for, for community involvement, working with the board along with other parts of the public school system. I would also just want to add, too, one of the things I learned that was the most striking to me about what the board does is how long it takes you all to do it. I was told that you work 15 hours a week on a normal minimum week, or regular week, and when budget happens, it goes beyond. This is voluntary service of really the highest order, and I really deeply appreciate all the work that you all do, and I think the people here do also. It's a very big job that you do. And thanks for coming tonight, everybody. Good night.[1486.51]